Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to, yeah. I'd like, I'd like to call to order the September 11th Vendor City Commission. Before we get started, I'd like to ask you all to take a moment of silence to reflect on the events of September 11th. We remember nearly 3,000 lives lost, the families forever changed. Appropriate the first responders that showed extraordinary bravery and sacrifice on that day. And we'd like to also pause to remember former Fire Chief Bertram Bert Sabo, close friend and dedicated chief for over, gave over 30 years to the City of vendor Fire Department, serving as chief from 2005 until his retirement. So I ask for a moment of silence on all their behalf. Thank you. Can we rise for the flags, please? Thank you. Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langgraf.
Here.
Commissioner Mento.
Here.
Mayor Kribel.
Here. Would you please read the, can I, I'd also recognize elected official or County Commissioner, Mr. Ruffey. Thanks for being here for all your purposes, other purpose, but nice to see you here.
And also want to welcome Bob Solari, my, my former councilman in Brigantine, former councilman there and retired AC firefighter. So welcome. Nice to see you guys here.
Thank you. So the roll call, all in.
Come on, Maria, who you have here?
We'll get to that. That's item, item seven. Lisa, could you read the open public's meeting announcement?
We're so into the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided. The agenda for this meeting is posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. Would you please read the live streaming announcement?
The City of vendor offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access as a convenience to the public. In the event remote access is unavailable for any reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue remote access at the discretion of the city for any future meetings.
Thank you. We're going to work a early resolution in here, Resolution 2025-294. Resolution authorizing the hiring of Christopher Hernandez under the state of New Jersey's alternate route program. PL 2021. I have a motion to accept that resolution.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langgraf.
Yes.
Commissioner Mento.
Yes.
Mayor Kribel.
Yes. So moving, yes? All in favor? Good job. So obviously you're all here for our oath of office. We will, we have four oaths to administer today, the first being Ryan, and would you pronounce it?
Tassone.
Tassone. So Commissioner Mento would like to.
If you don't mind, Ryan, I would like to swear you in. As your Deputy Mayor. Unless you rather have the mayor. Is this it, Tim?
Yeah.
So you should have his name on it. Which one? Those, these are for all of them. So fire, that's firefighter Brahmi.
It's that one.
There you go. They're in order. This also means you get to go to Maria's with thanks to.
So there's a little bit of a story here. I just met Ryan tonight for the first time. And when I saw his name on the list, I was looking at it and looking at it and looking at it. And I called his father up and I said, is this your son? Because I remember seeing you on Facebook, the panel. Is there two of them? Ryan is my cousin, my second cousin. I'm getting emotional. I don't think I ever met you unless you were a little kid running around at a family party. You know, and then we all went our ways and we moved from where we grew up and his grandmother, my father were brother and sister. So this is a real honor and privilege for me. Thank you for allowing me to do this. So you will repeat after me and raise your right hand. Got the bio? Okay. And you know, we're all cousins too. One of your cousins. Yeah. I, Ryan Tassone, do solemnly swear that.
I, Ryan Tassone, do solemnly swear that.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the state.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith, allegiance.
To the same and to the governments.
To the same and to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly.
Impartially and justly.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Perform all the duties of the office.
Of firefighter.
Firefighter.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Signature of.
Welcome to the family, the family. Okay, we got everything here?
Lisa, anything else?
Do we need his address? High Street address? Okay.
You guys got a picture for the pictures? You come up, you're welcome to this. All the way up, right there. You're going to come into the pictures, mom and dad.
Put your shirt down, buddy.
The middle of the front. Now you're on TV, now you're on TV too. We'll have to send this out to Hamilton. Don't leave yet. Don't leave yet. Spiderman. There we go. Brahmi. Sign, go to Lisa. This is, this is next.
Good.
You got Brahmi, right?
Yep.
Congratulations. We're going to move everybody into the middle to pick that one. She's great. Repeat that for me and then if you say that. Do solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
To the best of my skills and ability. Oh, God. Congratulations.
He's got a sign.
Thank you. I know his video and you don't get to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thought you were done. All right.
All right. You got the last one?
Yep.
Could you help me with your, the pronunciation of your last name? Little pickup better. Yeah. All right. So I'm, I'm just going to read this in phrases and then it's up to you whether you were trying to say so. So we'll wait till it calms down a little bit, but you ready? Raise your right hand. Wait for the chief to silence the room. Do you silence the room? You want to silence? Thank you. I, Nicholas Gudera.
I, Nicholas Gudera.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government.
And to the government.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of the office of firefighter.
The office of firefighter.
According to the best of my skill and ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my skill and abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. See the row? He said one was a row or he said.
He's the row.
All right. That's still row. I wrote in high school too.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Yeah, that's good. Oh, here you got a sign.
I wrote in high school too.
Did you?
Yeah, Lanikai, Carolina. That's 89.
That's 85.
Okay.
Yeah. We wrote with them. Yes.
Okay. She's awesome. I visited her in England.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All set? All right, your phone slide now. Congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. All right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So make sure they stay. Christopher, Christopher Hernandez? All right. Hi. All right. You have to get your kids to come out of their shell.
Yeah.
Nothing like.
Oh, it's fine. You guys are fine. So choose two you can say so. Hello?
It's how people talk. Daddy can put the stamp on it.
Yeah. I want to hold. Whoop, watch your head.
All right, you hold it right there.
Yep. Here, you want to hold this? All right, ready?
Ready.
I, Christopher Hernandez.
I, Christopher Hernandez.
Ron a clock. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the government established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties of the office of police officer.
All the duties of the office of police officer.
Effective September 15th, 2025.
Effective September 15th, 2025.
According to the best of my skills and abilities, so help me God.
According to my best abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to hold it?
Some future politicians.
Yeah. All right. Day meeting. All right, you got to do, say, say, meeting adjourned. All right, make good job.
Picture and then we got to get out of here.
All right.
You got it? All right, I'm done. Let's go.
Let's go. Let's go. Uniform personnel up front. Get one with them. You take a picture with everyone. So if you're done, we get them squeezed in here. Guys, poop down. Come on down. Didn't have to swaddle them, you're a big guy. Stand in between so it's like a team thing. Cause I'm behind you. Somebody take one for us? Lisa has it. We got Lisa, Lisa. Boom, saddle up.
That's what I'm saying.
But hardly anybody left. Bill Clard standing a little bit, that was nice. All right, all right. Take this back. That was helpful.
That was helpful. Double doubles as a child rattle.
Yeah. All right. So we'll move on to item six. We have a presentation. This evening, DAJ presentation with Jack Plactor. Your. The microphone is on there. It looks like it's.
Just hit the.
Just hit that button there to turn it on. There you go.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners and professionals, may it please the board. Jack Plactor from Fox Watchchild representing DAJ. We just wanted to, you know, give you a presentation so you can make a finding of whether you think our current plans are consistent with the redevelopment plan. I have with me Tom Days, who's from Arthur Poncio's office. He's a licensed professional engineer and planner, as well as Aaron Smith, who's one of the principals. And Matt as well from the principals. So the biggest change I think that we made between, you know, we got a lot of input from, we got some input from the commissioners. We got some input from the planning board. I think the biggest change that we made was the architectural elevations and, you know. Nice architectural rendering, nice architectural feeling. Seashore has a brick, has a natural landscape. We do have three spaces per unit. And we did cut down the density, not significantly, but we cut out a couple of units to have more of a park-like area in the center. We've also filed our site plan application and I can, we can swear Tom in, but to be honest with you, the site plan, it's 34 units rather than 36. Each unit has three parking spaces and we aren't requesting any variances or deviations at all from the approved redevelopment plan that this council or commission, excuse me, approved recently. So we have filed for a formal planning board application. It's, it's in the process of being reviewed. And we're very excited about the project. The commercial, you know, we could show you the renderings, but the commercial is really not part of, why don't you put those up, Tom? You know, we, we want to add outdoor patios and lighting, but that's not really subject, you know, to the planning board application at this time. We're waiting to lock down some tenants. Some of the commissioners have been very nice to, I think, refer to us potential tenants and we're excited about talking to them. And once we get that nailed down, we'll be back before the board. We don't really need to take a lot of your time, but Tom and the principals are here if you have any particular questions about our application.
I think the, the application coming before the planning board is real, the nuts and bolts will get meted out. I mean, from a surface look at it, it does meet, seems to me to meet the redevelopment plan goals and objectives and the parameters of it. No relief being requested, which is nice. Means you're filed with the plan, which is good.
Correct.
And I do appreciate the, the work towards the, the architectural. That was always something that was brought up at the planning board, brought up here a couple of times. The residents have, have raised it. I think looking at the different, if you can pull that back up, Tom.
Sure, yeah.
Just the facades there, I think more lend itself with the outdoor space on those decks. Before, if you remember, the, the decks really were kind of inset.
Right.
Had roofs over them. I like the fact that these are open decks. For the most part, at least the top two are open decks. The first floor certainly is covered by the second floor deck, but I think I like that, that design. It's got the Key West style. I don't know what you call them. You're the architect. On the side, side waters.
Yes. That little.
Roofs over there, yeah.
They do have a lot of that in the sort of the cottages in Key West with the metal roof. Yeah.
Kind of like that.
Yeah.
I think it has come around a little bit. I can't see the brick on it. I know you guys were trying to work some brick into it from the school facade and try and work that in. I don't see that, but I'm not looking at it up close. So it's along the bottom. Ground floor, okay.
We can, you want to bring it up for you or?
No, that's fine. Well, like I said, we'll get a more detailed look at it at the planning board level. But from the, from a redevelopment standpoint, I think it's moving in the right direction and I think we would be ready, I think, at our next meeting in two weeks to do a resolution supporting this as being consistent with the redevelopment plan.
Right. Yeah. I just want to piggyback on what Lance said, just to add. Yeah, I just want to piggyback on what Lance said, just to add, I like that there's a reduction in the density from some of the original numbers that we heard. And I think the site and some of the drawings, you really have to, it are, are a little, aren't, don't do it justice. I think this, the, there's, there's setbacks from Troy Avenue and the opposite street where there's no, there's no entrances to those. So we're protecting some of the the mass away from, or you are protecting some of the mass from the streets, and I think that's a little hard to perceive. With the school is also has green space in front, you're adding green space in the middle and for, for, from my point of view, I think it's, it's important because they're townhouses that it shows that there is some air and space in between these. And I, it's hard to, I can see it on the floor plan, it's a little hard to see it in the renderings, but those, the, the, using grass patches in between the driveways is, I think, it looks like what you're proposing. I think those, all those cues can combine to make it a more open feeling. And, you know, to your credit, you're not looking for any deviations or variances here.
Correct.
There, that, that, so, so, so some of the, you know, our, so opinions are, are, are open. I, I would ask if you could keep us posted on what your, your plans are for the commercial, I think that's something that we as a city are always trying to, to keep the momentum going. We'd love to see that, the vacancies.
Sure.
You know, we'd love to see those vacancies occupied and, and it matters from the lighting plan, from an, from a, from an, in the evening, the city seems a little dark and that's parked. So having the outdoor lighting plan for the school and the, and the future commercial, we, we, we just encourage you to do as quickly as possible because.
We may, we may be able to perhaps implement the lighting plan, you know, as, as, you know, when we do the residential development as well while we're waiting, I think that'll help with the marketability of the building as well.
Yeah, I agree, I think that if you could have the lighting plan with the uplift, the building to give it some of the char, the architectural character while that's happening and developing, I think that would only benefit the city and you for, to have, I would appreciate, I would appreciate that. But the, I, I like how the, how you took some of our comments to bring in the brick from the school itself and bring in some of those, the current, you know, the current tastes for, for coastal finishes. You know, there's a lot of blacks and blues and grays, but that's, that's what people like right now.
Right. Also noticing, Maria, before you get a chance, they do have the one-way street going, it looks like it's going to go towards Troy Avenue, I think is where we're.
Yep. Yeah. Yeah, so as long as there's, you know, I think all the green space you can, I would, you know, play, play that forward as you get into the planning board, but Commissioner Mento, if you had any comment.
I think you both pretty much said it all, other than this is a big change from what was first presented, so it's much more appealing, at least to me.
The applicant did listen to their credit, so thank you guys.
Yeah. And thank you for, we met and thank you for taking our suggestions and comments into consideration.
Well, redevelopment agreement is a partnership between the governing body and the redevelopers, so, you know, we have to take those things into account and it actually made our development, I think, better, to be honest with you, your suggestions.
Good. Well, it's, it's a, it's an underused piece of property in the city, it's the last big vacant space, really the largest vacant space in the proper town of Ventnor City. And having, and, you know, bringing more population allows us to do more with, you know, events and, and the businesses do better. So we're, we're looking forward to your success, your success is our success.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And the three parking spaces is huge.
Yeah. Well, and plus by not fronting them on, you know, on the streets, in other words, by flipping them, that most of the fronts are on the inside road. We were able to save a tremendous number of the, those angular parking spaces, which is good for the neighborhood as well. Cause originally we were going to put the townhomes along Troy Avenue in New Haven and that, you know, would have taken up a lot of the angular parking spaces.
Can you show the plan again? The plan view?
Site plan.
Site plan.
Yeah. Yeah, so this.
And I think that this actually creates a, its own, you know, when I say its own little neighborhood, but it kind of does.
Sure.
Now you have the existing older homes on Troy. And, excuse me, in New Haven, but this will create its own little, you know, the little townhouse development in the core of our community than our downtown business area. So I think it's, it's ripe for pedestrian circulation and all of that that it brings with it.
You don't lose any street parking or minimal street parking, just at the curb cut. You, you, you push that commercial parking towards the, 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 you know, the redeveloped school building. And it left that green space in between that I think, I heard, I think I remember hearing that the, 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 the commercial side will, will, will take care of that, that space, right? So, so those are, it's hard to, it's hard to pick, to pick holes at it at this point, especially because there's no variances required here. This is all, you know, three, three parking places, three bedrooms, appropriate sized, reduced from, I think it was in the sixties, original plan was, so this is a great, this is a, I think this is a better fit, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, and you're close to the firehouse.
Very close.
Well, we thank you very much, and if there's any other questions, we'll.
I think so, and I think we'd be in a position for next, our next meeting on the twenty-fifth, I think it is.
Twenty-fifth.
To have a resolution prepared to, to show that that's substantially consistent with the redevelopment plan.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're also hoping to get the redevelopment agreement finalized then too as well and be named the redevelopers if we could.
Okay, yeah.
I think we got a lot of changes.
Saw some drafts of it today.
Yeah.
I think I was fine with what, what Mike had suggested, we'll circulate it now with the rest of the.
Okay, great.
Commission and move that forward as well.
And if there's any questions on that, we're more than happy to speak with you about the redevelopment agreement.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Always a pleasure. Have a good ones.
There he is, he moved behind there, good to see you guys again. So David had the closest commute and he's not here. Ah. There you go. Thank you.
So, so we're going to adjust the agenda a little bit, just so that we can have some, we can, we can have our, our guests here. And so Lisa, we have, we have to read the.
We do, we have executive session.
Executive session?
Yes.
So we just asked that the Zoom platform puts people in waiting room and it's. I'm sorry, do we do it?
And one of the attorneys might be on Zoom.
Oh, I see.
David Weinstein from, I don't see him on there though.
No, there's nobody on here.
He's trying to get here, so we might have to go back into it later. David Weinstein from Archer, it's on the, the other redevelopment plan.
Oh, okay.
So. All right.
Was that, is that on the?
It was for the.
No, we're just having two executives tonight.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's not executive, he's just going to be here to, for discussion, yeah.
For that discussion and I don't think we're.
Sorry, that's, we can get to that later.
Yeah. All right, so can I have a motion for, to enter into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Can I roll call, please?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act permits the discussion of certain matters within an executive session as an exception to certain provisions of said law. The vendor city Board of Commissioners wishes to discuss certain matters which qualify as exceptions in executive session. No binding upon, no action binding upon the Board of Commissioners will be taken within executive session and the discussion conducted in closed session will be disclosed to the public when, excuse me, when legally permitted and when the public interest will no longer be served by keeping such matters confidential. The two matters to be discussed are litigation matters, attorney-client privilege, and contract negotiations.
Is there anybody in the waiting room?
Okay.
Okay, so we're back after the closed session, during the closed session, we discussed two items, one was a litigation involving Caris Brook in. So to address that, we're going to take a motion to proceed as discussed in that closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Lisa, can I have a roll call?
Mr. Langria?
Yes.
Mr. Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
And with the second item, we discussed the negotiations with the P B A, that's the police union for the city, and there will be a resolution addressing that during the body of the meeting.
Okay. All right.
All right, so moving forward, we have, we are at item nine, correct?
Yep.
So we have minutes of the June twelfth regular session, we, I think we were all, were we all here for that, right? So no one's, everyone's good there, then we'll have, we have no ordinance introductions and we have no public hearings and adoptions. We do have A through double A of resolutions and contracts for, on our consent agenda, starting with two sixty-seven. This is to reappoint Summer Renzi as the C R S coordinator.
Yep.
Correct?
It was her chair, now she jointly works with us in Longport.
Right. So this is a reappearance of Summer.
Yes.
Two sixty-eight is, this is payout for funds for Tom Halpin under his, for vacation and sick time, as described in his contract. Correct? Item two sixty-nine, this is revenue and special revenue and appropriations. This is a management assistance grant for ten thousand dollars from T L P S. Lance, is that a part of?
Emergency management.
Emergency management, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So it's for supplies, basically.
For supplies. Okay. Two seven zero is refunding a merchant deal license and fee and fire inspection fee for a total of one hundred dollars. Pretty straightforward there, that the, the building did not go forward. Two seven one is accepting the resignation of Zachary Calhoun. Okay. Resolution two seventy-two is salary adjustment for Michael Miltonberg in Public Works effective May first of twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, this was supposed to be on earlier in the summer, we just never got on the agenda, so.
Yep, understood.
Can I go back to the grant, it's cold weather gear.
Cold weather gear.
Divers and barricades and generators.
Barricades, we always need more barricades. This is for changing our professional services limit for Blaine Donahue in Weinberg, not to exceed ninety-six hundred dollars, ninety-six thousand dollars.
Hundred, that would be.
Hundred. Many, few hundreds. And, and next is two seventy-four, resolution, this is authorizing a tax refund, it was a duplication of payment. Two seventy-five is awarding a forestry consulting needs to Baby Resources Group, this was a tree inventory. About to exceed our five thousand dollars from the city for a twenty-five thousand dollar cost, we got a twenty thousand dollar grant for that, which will help us with getting grants and improving the, the treescape in the city. Two seventy-six is, this is our, our agreement to oppose the proposed Protecting Against Climate Threat Pact. And the real rules for resilient environment and landscape rules, we've discussed this a number of times, but if you wanted to reiterate anything.
Yeah, it's just, again, renewing our objection, we've probably passed five resolutions opposing this over the last three years. The D E P is just not listening to anyone. Commissioner Latorette continues to push this forward, even with legislators asking him to hold it. And let the new governor, whoever he or she may be, decide if that's the way they want to move forward. So all the municipalities along the coastline are, are passing this resolution to oppose that.
As we should, I, I met with an architect working on a municipal project that says it's just, you know, it's kind of puts everything at, at hold.
Yep, going to shut down development on the barrier islands and if it is built, it's going to push it up another five feet in the air.
Mm-hmm, five feet. Okay, so.
Oh, let me correct myself, they, they've changed the rule to lower it to four feet.
Okay, all right.
Thinking that was the olive branch that was going to get us all to say, oh yay.
So how many feet is it total, four feet with the four?
On, on top of the twelve we already had.
Yeah.
So if you raised your home post Sandy and you're all compliant with FEMA paying very little flood insurance, that's going to change.
Which is going to be charged.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, it was done without, and even the people that wrote the.
Yeah, the Rutgers study, the, the professors and engineers that wrote the, the flood elevation change study have reneged on their own study. They've said we used, we forecasted it too far out, nobody knows how far that that's going to be.
Right.
We should look at much smaller increments, they're looking at eighty to a hundred years out.
So what's the recourse if this does pass, can, can the towns do a class action suit like we were talking about earlier?
But it's not legislatively, this was not done through legislation, this was done through rulemaking process at the D E P. This, that's, that's the biggest problem, it didn't go to our legislators.
Right.
Never went to the Assembly, never went to the Senate. It's the governor saying, we're going to do this, and he told Latorette to write new rules, and he did. It's extremely frustrating.
That step of open and open government and.
Yep.
The debate. So that could be a possibility for litigation.
Yeah, so there's, there's a lot of support in the legislative body, both Assembly and, and how, and the Senate to squash this. So I'm hopeful, that's why it's been delayed, they're pushing to try and adopt this literally in December.
With the railroads, they want to, if, if every, if the people that did the studies are no longer supporting it.
Insurance companies.
Studies against it.
It's the insurance companies. It's flat out the insurance companies.
Right, okay, so.
That's the lobby group, that's why we can't get the liquor license, because the lobbyists. Exactly.
Are catering to the insurance company.
Exactly. The lobbyist groups, that's why we can't get the liquor license changed, because the lobbyist groups for the restaurants don't want it to change because they have a monopoly on it.
Right.
So it's frustrating.
Okay, so I guess we're all in agreement there.
Yep.
Two seven seven is. Two seven seven is refunding of a basketball camp fees. Two seven eight is refunding of volleyball fees. Two seven nine is refunding partial soccer camp fees. Two eight zero is duplicate payment for an event permit. Two eight one is city better approving the interim appointment of Gabriel Hano for a police interim sergeant. So this is an interim seat for, to fill a vacancy. So it is, and, and potentially, so he would be an acting sergeant to fill a officer on that, on that, on that shift. Two eight, any questions there?
Nope, no, I know Gabriel, good guy.
Two eight two is authorizing, this is something we do every quarter, this is enforcement for no parking within the city of Ventnor from October first to December thirty-first. And the following, two eight three is authorizing non-enforcement from the holiday season, so from Thanksgiving through New Year's Day of non-enforcement, something we do every year.
And it goes to May thirty-first.
In some areas. So there's two separate time, times here, one is there's no parking throughout the entire city from New Year's to. From Thanksgiving to New Year's and certain areas in the off-season from October first, municipal lots, that's.
I, I, I was suggesting maybe we should add Dorset Avenue to the October one through May thirty-first, I don't know if you guys saw my little note on that.
I didn't see that one. I wouldn't have an issue with that, it's, it's a very short little section there.
Two blocks.
Can we amend that on the fly here? All right, we would add Dorset Avenue to that.
So to be clear, we're going to, we'll take it out, so the one whereas in the resolution indicates which ones would be fully enforced.
So we just take it out.
So we'll take out both sides of Dorset Avenue.
Okay.
Correct.
And one hundred blocks. Yeah, okay.
Okay. Okay.
And. And say.
It's two eighty-three.
Two eighty-three. Ended, okay. Going forward, two eighty-four is bidding for the tennis court project, so this allows us to set the purchasing agent out to public bid for the tennis court project, anything you want to add to that?
I met with Palestine Associates and Ed Stinson and Rick and I think it was CJ and then Snake was there too, to talk about, you know, potential layout changes. Not a whole lot for the tennis and pickleball court areas, we did decide that at least one of the tennis courts would be striped out as a alternate pickleball. We may rearrange that a little bit so we can get three courts out of it instead of just two. Um, we may rearrange that a little bit so we can get three courts out of it instead of just two. Um, we're we're talking about that, but that might take some extra effort looking at that. Um, we did talk about a a shade structure in that center patio area um to kind of give people some respite from the shade. Um, new water fountains, things like that, spruce spruce up the whole thing. So that's the that's the concept at this point. I have not seen a final concept on it, but.
I think bathrooms are there fine.
Bathrooms are fine. Um, we do want to get that signage up that we've talked about. We want to get the signage out there, so.
Yep, I saw that.
Yep.
Um, bike racks are, and there there's some weekends where that.
That's the other thing where it has covered with like. More bike racks in there and the landscaping that's around that courtyard is all coming out.
Good.
Because it's had its end replaced. It won't, we're gonna go back to kind of dune grass kind of stuff and make it more manageable there.
Yeah, I like the sound of it. Great. Um, so the then the next two uh items are abandoned vehicle auctions for our two separate uh towing. Services, um, that's a resolution for setting a date for those. That's uh two eight five and two eight six, something we do very often.
That's crazy. The cars are towed and nobody ever comes in places.
Not a nice car.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I checked.
Yeah.
Two eighty seven is uh cancellation of tax uh for uh this is for North Buffalo Avenue. Um, I think that was this a they uh there was just an error there. Um, two eighty eight is uh authorizing fees for tax sales. So this sets the fees for all of our um tax sales. And then this, and then two eighty nine sets the fees for the electronic version of uh, which are, it seems like all they we have zero. We have a full compliance on all that.
We do this every year.
Every year. Uh, two nine zero, this is um revocable license. So Lance, you have anything to add to this? This is on Derby or Dudley?
Dudley, we talked about it last meeting. We got a description of it. Um, it's basically some landscape. They're putting in a pool. And it's right behind the Wahini Wine Bar, so those units that are there. So they're putting in a pool there and they're just putting in some additional landscaping outside of their fence, which is on the property line, but it's in our right of way. So anytime you put anything in our right of way like that, they've asked to, so some fencing and landscaping in that area.
Yep.
And if we ever need to space, that's why it's revocable.
Right.
We can pull it back.
That street's looking really good now. I mean, I'm, I see that from both the bay and the street. And it that 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 whole Edgewater has become a really, a really nice street. It really improved.
Well, a lot of uh building.
A lot, yep. Um, so uh.
Two nine.
Two nine one is.
Hold that.
We're pulling two nine one.
And two nine two and two nine three.
And two nine three, two and two nine three, we are pulling from this evening.
Yep.
So we're we're pulling two nine two and two nine three. Um, but we are asking for a motion to authorize the administrator to go out to get an appraisal on those two properties. So it's six five one two Ventnor Ave and four eight oh three Ventnor Ave. They're two vacant lots that we've been trying to sell for a couple of years now. So we'd like to get a proper appraisal on them so that we can put them out for a for bid, for auction.
Do you want that motion now?
Yeah.
Yep, I'd make that motion to go out to an appra- get an appraisal of those two properties.
Second.
Oh, roll calls?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
So the last three are pulled.
Correct.
And we had to add.
We do have to add, I believe it's two ninety seven, six. Which would be a resolution authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with uh between the city and the PBA. Or a term of a new agreement um for four years, starting January one of twenty twenty five.
With that motion now?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a roll calls?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes.
Do we need one for Christopher Hand Hernandez as well?
No, you voted on ninety four in the.
Oh, at the beginning, that's right. I'm sorry.
We just have to say that two eighty three as amended when we get to uh.
Gotcha.
Three eighty three and just add two ninety six to the consent agenda. So that's captured in the actual resolutions in the regular meeting because this is still the work session portion.
Two sixty seven to two eighty two and then two eighty four to two ninety and then.
Say that again.
So I have two sixty seven to two eighty two.
To two eighty two.
Yep, and then two eighty three we're pulling. We're gonna vote on that separate. Then we're gonna go to two eighty four to two ninety, we'll vote as in consent. And adding two ninety six. And then when we're done that, we'll come and vote on two eighty three.
Got it. Okay. Uh, and that comes to the end of our works session in um for the uh. For the resolutions by consent, uh, we'll have approval of bills and payroll. And we have one discussion item for tax abatement. You want to cover that now?
Sure.
Um, tax abatement is the, oh no, you don't have it. Uh, it was uh uh Tom uh just said that uh he his recommendation is that we, it's been uh popular. It it's coming up for renewal, so uh it's been a popular and successful program. And our, if we're in agreement, we would continue it.
Right, and ordinance, I believe everybody should have gotten a copy of it. I have them one on the bench if anybody would like to just refresh. When is this coming up? When is this expire? Um.
He gifted.
Yeah, but I'm not sure.
It's before the next meeting?
I don't know if it actually says it when it's up, I'm sorry. I know we had really, really brief, not even a discussion, maybe comments that you.
Couple of months back, we had that.
Um, yeah, so the 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 we did, and I was kind of um, I banged heads a little, not banged heads. But I kind of asked some questions of the tax uh assessor if we could sculpt it in ways that improved other areas. Some areas more than others, take away some of the beach block, but it you, but it was kind of a, you really can't, you you really have to treat everybody the same.
Got it.
So um.
Take care of that.
Yeah, that was my only. That was my only, you know, ask was to discuss it and that's what uh, that's what we came back with.
We need to do this tonight?
No.
So if you guys all okay with this and you think this is what you want to do, we'll introduce it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
You would have paid, you would pass it.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, good.
So that's the discussion.
Yeah, as long as you, Tom was gonna be here and I guess he was gonna work with you if you saw any changes.
Yeah.
But if you think of anything, I guess you could get back to him before the next meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I was like looking to, I wasn't looking to do anything radical to it because I think the 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 communities of. Of uh sit of house, uh the the temperature is not, you know, I think it's it's well thought of in uh in the city for. And by realtors and by purchasers. Um, it gets us a little bit of an edge and it ends up paying for itself in the long run. So I I asked what it did cost the city and um about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but in in a, on a yearly basis. But in in the long run, it repays it in in multiples of that. So, oh, I'm in favor of it.
So we'll include that on September twenty fifth.
Yes.
Meeting for introduction.
Right. Um, so we have a public portion, um. Uh, um, if uh we have a uh motion to open the discuss the uh workshop for um. For the public, if anybody in the chambers or on the Zoom platform wishes to comment about anything that we've talked about so far. In the workshop session, there will be time at the end of the commission meeting to talk about general topics.
Make that motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Seeing none in the, you're good? Tom? Anybody, uh Jim, anyone in the Zoom platform that wishes to make a comment about anything we discussed so far?
No, there isn't anybody on the Zoom platform.
No one there, okay. Um, a motion to close workshop portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, so with that, I'll call to order the regular session of the meeting. That motion to approve minutes of June twelfth, twenty twenty five?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, no, we have no introductions, uh, no public hearing, no ordinance adoptions. So, fingers crossed I get this right, motion to adopt resolutions two sixty seven to two eighty two. Excluding two eighty three. And motion and resolutions two eighty four to two ninety and adding two ninety six.
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Maybe a roll call?
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, patting myself on the back that I got that. Alright, it was like.
Now we gotta do the amended.
So now we do, uh, can I have a motion to, uh, I'll get too cocky, can I have a motion? To approve uh resolution two eighty three as described in the workshop session.
Make a motion to.
That's amended.
I was gonna say with my motion, to approve resolution two eighty three as amended.
Second.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, with uh out patting myself on the back. Um, item nineteen is uh approving bills of payroll. Do you have that?
Yes.
For your uh Amy, since she's no longer.
I have bills in amount of eight million, three hundred and seventy three thousand, eight hundred and eight eighteen dollars. I have two payrolls, the first being eight, three, twenty twenty five to eight sixteen, twenty twenty five in the amount of eight hundred and four thousand, eighty five dollars and seventy cents. And eight seventeen to eight thirty, twenty twenty five, seven hundred and eleven thousand, one hundred and twenty three dollars and thirty eight cents.
Did I hear that correctly? So two months in a row, we had zero cents on one of the bills?
Yeah, the bills, yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Wow.
Eight million, three seventy three, eight.
Happiness comes to those who wait, right?
That's a powerball number you gotta play. I'm telling you, it's powerball.
Are no coincidence.
Um, announcements and and uh safety report. I'm sorry, can we have a roll, we have a motion to accept uh bills?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Langria?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, um, and no announcements uh or safety reports, uh, commission comments or reports, Commissioner Langria, do you have any?
I've got a list.
Alright.
Um, so I'll start with Public Works. Thanks, Rick, for for my list of stuff. So Titus Field Press Box, we did a rebuild out there. That's complete. There's some photographs. I'll pass that around, shoot that out to you guys. Um, Titus Field sign, I have to thank both Rick and former Commissioner Sandy Vespertino. Um, Sandy came out, we we were, Rick and I were talking about finally finishing that brick sign right by the boathouse there, that one entrance. Um, ran into, or Patty, Patty and I were talking, she's, well, Sandy had started that um years ago, twenty plus years ago. So reached out to him, took us a while to get the right brick, um, but Sandy and his team have been working on that for, you know, on his days where you can fit it in. And it's coming around. Um, there's gonna be some plaques on there. He's working with, that sign was originally designed to thank the folks. That originally started the work on Titus Field, um, the volunteers that keep those programs going. So he's got a list that he's putting a plaque together to thank and to put on that that sign. Uh, we are also gonna have, you know, the the name Titus Field on there as well in raised kind of um. Uh, metal letters, um, so that's moving forward.
Right.
And I've already heard some comments about people walking around while I was out there, um, talking with Rick and Sandy about, you know, man, it took a while, but it's really starting to look good. If you go by there, it still looks like a work under construction, but brick looks good. Um, North Swathmore Swathmore Road resurfacing has been completed out there by Shalom House. Um, that's been done. We had an issue with that road, pedestrian crossing. You've seen them on Atlantic Avenue. Uh, we're gonna look to add some of those to some of the other intersections on uh Ventnor Avenue as well, and you'll see them around town. We added them on Lafayette and Calvert, I think that intersection is. A resident had reached out there and and Public Works and PD jumped on it right before school started and got a an officer out there, which was nice for the start of school. Um, please thank the chief for his work there. Um, we're gonna look to talk to the county in the coming for the for next summer. About Ventnor Avenue uh crosswalk striping. There's some intersections that are not striped, um, but are also not signaled. Last time I remember having that conversation with them, they don't like striping intersect, non signalized. They want to encourage everybody to go to the signals. Nobody's walking a block or two blocks to go to a sign. They want to cross where their street is. So we're we're gonna reinitiate that conversation. We can do it on our streets where we own Dorset. Uh, from Dorset, not Dorset, from on Ventnor, from Dorset to Jackson.
Yeah.
So we'll look at doing some of that at some of those main intersections that have that need crosswalks.
I think the business section, especially in um around.
I think most.
Eleven, it doesn't, and that's a.
That's the county.
Yeah.
We we have, and that was the answer before, but we're gonna have to re- reiterate it, so. Um, Winchester Avenue Sewer Main, Commercial Cleaning to Oxford, Surrey, Oceanside Con- is complete. Bayside is taking place uh this week. Let's see, skip some of those stuff. The uh Ventnor Gardens Pro Plaza Project is fifty percent uh complete, concrete sidewalks, curbs. It's after some of the the stormwater work we've done, got another call from some residents out there. It seems to be working. When it's just a rain event, it's working a ton better. When it's tidal, we're still struggling there. Um, that's kind of all I have on the Public Works end. We've been working, I'm sure Maria's gonna talk about Seafood Fest, but we've been working with them getting set up out there. John Henderson and his team have moved into their residency for the for the five days that they'll be here. We're gonna have to prorate his taxes for those five days. Um, if you get out there, he's got a new puppy called Hondo. It's a cool dog. Um, go out and say hello.
I'm here in Seoul and I thought, somebody's living here.
Yeah.
Put a call up.
It's John.
There's a trailer.
Yeah, that's John. Maybe sign it over to him for the period of time.
Yeah.
He runs his own security program there.
Yeah.
Um, some news with grants, um, more engineering side of 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 infrastructure. We got a bunch of money for uh design and um planning for these projects. North Surrey Avenue Water Tower improvements, that's sixty five thousand in grant funds for engineering and design. For the repair and painting of that tower, uh Fulton Avenue, Fremont Avenue Stormwater Pump Station improvements, um, four hundred and forty thousand in grant funds. Grant covers engineering, planning, permitting, design costs of four hundred and forty thousand dollars of the construction of new storm water pump station. We locate the intersection of Fulton and Little Rock. That's the street that floods all the time, so we're we're upgrading that. Uh, Lafayette Avenue Sanitary Sewer Pump Station improvements, hundred and eighty five thousand in grant funds for that. Covers grant or engineering, design costs up to that number, um, emergency generator, new rails, piping, new pumps. Um, five hundred year flood, it's gonna be flood proof for five hundred year flood elevations. And then lastly, Ventnor Heights sanitary uh lateral replacement, this coincides with the lead line service replacements. This would be the sewer laterals as we're going through. We don't want to dig up the road as the sewer lines fail, so we're gonna replace all that at the same time. This allows us to design and and do that work at the same time, so thirteen hundred sanitary sewer laterals in Ventnor Heights.
Lot.
It's a lot. So in total, it's like just over a million dollars in grant funds for four projects, so. So it's all the design's gonna be covered.
Yeah.
Which is good, and that sets us up for I bank funding for all these projects.
Right.
Should get another summary from Jim back to two thousand and sixteen from Grant.
We will. Yeah, definitely.
Access.
The time's coming. The time's coming. So, but that's it. I know that was a lot, but I didn't really do a big report last month, so. Thanks to Rick and his team and Ed and his team for getting me this stuff together. Ed and his team, it's Ed.
That is the team.
That is the team.
Revenue, finance here and events, and revenue finance is typically usually, you know, the same old thing, every day doing what they need to do. Um, I think by now everybody's paid their tax bill. When those those bills went out, there was a delayed um. A later payment date because we couldn't get them out until we got the information from the county. And as soon as we plugged them in, we got them out. Uh, finance is, um, we're we're transitioning to a new payroll system and. That's never pleasant, something like that, but uh they're moving along with it and everything seems to be going okay. And then um the fund stuff of this job is the events, and as Lance mentioned, the Seafood Fest is this weekend at Ski Beach. It's Saturday and Sunday, so come on out. Um. Every restaurant you can imagine is there offering the best of what they do.
It's amazing.
Yeah, it really is amazing. It's a great event.
Usually they added a wine tent this year.
A wine tent?
Wine tent. They have craft beer, they have uh wine, oyster tents, all that kind of stuff.
Like thirteen breweries there.
Yep.
Uh, and there's a.
The the chowder.
Chowder.
Yeah, the uh uh food bank.
They have one thing that was not seafoody, it was like a bacon on a stick.
Stick was fantastic last year.
Amazing.
Yeah?
Oh, yeah, it's like, it's the, it's like as big as this gavel.
Slab of bacon.
And then they dip it in honey or whatever. Yeah, it's crazy good.
Sounds awful.
No, it's not.
Well, that's what I mean.
It's.
Not good for you, but it's very good.
Like there's a lot.
Only one or two days.
Only one or two days.
Yeah, it goes good with the lobster.
Next September event is sold out, it's Manja Manja at Red Room, it's September twenty-seventh, that's sold out rather quickly, we might be, uh, upping it next year to another twenty-five people.
Wow.
So from a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty.
Run that tent all the way down to Surrey Avenue.
Yeah. Um, we have Wounded Warrior, please come out and, um, honor our, uh, our veteran at Ski Beach on September seventeenth at five fifteen. It starts at Ski Beach, it runs down Dorset Avenue, usually people are out there cheering, uh, the individual on, and then it turns up to Atlantic Avenue and goes all the way to Longport. And, you know, various sections get a lot of people, and we always want to have the most people in Ventnor, so please come on out, and that's nine seventeen, beginning at Ski Beach at five fifteen. And then we do have a date for the Eagles Tailgate, that's October nineteenth, and, um, there are some other October dates, but I guess I can go over them at the next meeting, the next September meeting. But there's, there's some fun stuff coming up, we got Fall Fun Fest, and, uh, we got some good stuff coming up, so that's it.
And the weather's gonna be good this weekend, it sounds like.
Yeah, so, it looks like it is. And, oh, we do have a Ventnor City Employee Health Fair and Appreciation Day on October tenth, and, um.
Great.
It'll be good. That's it for me.
Great, I just have two things, uh, I just wanna circle back to Fire Station Two, and Ventnor Heights is now, uh, fully operational for the police department as well, so kudos to Chief Cahill and Chief Wooton for working together, and the two forces for, uh, sharing, cohabitating there. So we have two, uh, up and running full, uh, workstations with, um, that are basically mirror images of workstations here, so, um, they have access with, uh, four-digit code, they have, uh, all the systems and resources that they would here in their office, uh, that a patrol would need, um, and they are, uh, uh, working together, uh, in that office. It, it sets us up to be more, uh, resilient if there's ever any problem with the, with the bridge, which sometimes happens, and also, uh, just, uh, in bad weather for the, for the added activity at the plaza, or, you know, we have more, uh, we have a presence out there and a place for our, our team to be. So, yeah, it's a good thing. And it was really virtually, um, very painless from a financial side, it was just the kind of thing where you'd need, we, we worked with resources we had, and bought some furniture and ironed out the logistics of it, so it was a, I think a, a good win-win.
But we have somebody there, or only if we need to have?
Only if you need to have someone there, the patrols have access to it, if they, uh, if they need to do paperwork or have a break of some kind, they've got a, um, that, what's that?
Bridge.
The bridge. Yeah, so it's a good example, we had this, uh, we always had the idea that they would need it, so we have a link to the, the police department's, uh, uh, mainframe there already, so it was already wired for that.
Same though.
Yeah, it was kind of one of the things that we added on our wish list that is now there, so it's really, um, it, it's like creating a substation within an existing structure that we have, and, um, and they've all been, um, you know, they're, they're being respectful of it, they have a printer, the phone, uh, uh, computer workstations, desk, and file cabinets there for, uh, for everything they need, right? Uh, for, for very low, low cost. Um, uh, I, I wanna just, uh, touch base on this and get your reactions, I did meet with, uh, I was at the planning board last night, and I sent you guys an email about adding some, um, some language to the e-codes regarding two things, uh, um, there's the appearance and, and maintenance and appearance for storefronts. Um, these are all things that are taken from codes in other cities, uh, namely sixty percent ground floor window remaining unobstructed, uh, prohibiting, uh, you know, reflective film and plywood on windows, uh, really just a vacancy standard, so if there's a vacant building that they are required to upkeep it to make it look at least presentable in a lot of ways, and not just have, uh, uh, empty, uh, the appearance of abandonment, um, uh, signage requirements, um, uh, uh, things that are, um, limiting temporary banners, we have that already in our, our code, facade maintenance, uh, prohibiting mismatched unfinished materials, uh, adding awning standards and lighting provisions, like, uh, like the box lights with fluorescents or disc, or, uh, um, are, are, um, discouraged. So these are things that could be, that if we have them in the code now, new construction that happens throughout the city, the architects and designers would look at these and incorporate them, uh, it's a little harder to do a look back and tell people to do what they have, but, um, that, and change what they have, but this is the way, um, that I think that, and adding some violations and penalties that directly impact the business environment when they're, when they're, when they're overlooked. Um, so the, uh, and, and then also the signage is really, uh, again, they're not really onerous, they're just things that going forward, new businesses as they arrive, uh, would take a closer look at and have some more consistency in their, uh, in their, in their design. Going forward with the master plan, that could, you could put some real definitions on that, but as we all know, things take time to get, the, the, to get actually executed and codified. This is something that we could easily just amend our ordinances to have, and that we could have, for instance, if there's, you know, something, if one of these, the future empty lots or a big renovation, they would be in the code, um, right away, so I'm looking for your support on that. Um, the planning board was a hundred percent, it was a small group, but it was a hundred percent in agreement with it, so they all, um, agreed. I can resend it.
Come on, send it again.
And I sent, I can send it again to you, um, with notes about some of the things.
Monday, I think you sent it.
Yeah, so some of the things are not, uh, applicable to code, but they would go into the master plan, so Romans Abbey X did a pretty thorough reading of it and made suggestions on which parts of the code it could go into, so I'll send that along.
Okay.
If you guys are in agreement, I don't think it's really, I'll, I'll talk to the Business Association about it as well. Um, you know, I think the, 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 the city's made some great strides, but things like lighting, especially my pet peeve of chasing LEDs around windows that.
That's already in the ordinance.
Yeah.
They can't be turned on.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they can have neon, they can have the lights, but they can't turn them as they're chasing, but it can't flash.
Right.
So that's already there, if you see it, we, the violation, those, they have to turn them off.
Good.
I think you mentioned to, like, something to cover, like buildings that are empty, and I always remember, I don't know if it was in their code, or they just did this, the old Sears building in Hamilton, I think it was Sears.
Hmm.
It was empty for the longest time, and it had, it was blueberries.
One downtown, still, still empty, still has blueberries.
Yeah, well, well, Asbury Park has a number of empty buildings, and they had like a art, they had like a, a, an art committee put in, uh, you know, in the windows, they made paintings and put them in the.
Oh, that's nice.
In the, of beach scenes, that kind of thing. You know, so Asbury Park is another town that's got some revitalization, but I, I, you know, we're not in a bad position, but it, I, I just don't, I, I, I could see the, the, that if we don't have some of these things in place, and the city is like, is, is not codified, then you could get people just putting up whatever they like without any, you know, without too much, um, organization. Do you have any?
I, I, I've said this before, I don't like telling people what to do with their property. So I, I agree with, with certain restrictions and putting things out there for, to make sure they're doing the right and proper thing, I'm not gonna tell them what to do with the facade of their building. I have not supported that at all. So setting up codes that sets standards, yes, architectural design features, I'm not telling someone to do with their, what to do with their property. It's, it's not my opinion that we should be doing that. Um, what I said in the email to you was, we're doing the master plan now, so these things that you talked about should go into the master plan, because in order to change an ordinance, we have to get a, a report from our planning board that says those ordinances are consistent with our master plan. So kill two birds with one stone, put these things into the ordinance, into the master plan, work, and then work through that process. If there's ones that we have to add in now, we can do that certainly, um, but putting in, you're gonna have to go back to the planning board and say, is it consistent with our current master plan? And they may not be. So that's why I was saying, put them in the master plan coming forward, and then we already have it as, you know, this is coming out of that master plan document that we can adopt these ordinances. So work, work through it, I just, I just don't, it's like flat roofs. Folks don't like flat roofs, I don't like flat roofs, I don't own the house. I'm not gonna tell you you can't have a flat roof on your home. Colors.
I'm not, yeah, and I'm not, I, I draw the line at things like colors, uh, I'm just saying, I think, so, like, things like transparency of the windows, uh.
That's fine, that's already in our ordinance, we can just update that from whatever it is now, I think it's at forty percent.
Right.
Maybe thirty-three, we can increase that, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, I would limit it to things, like, I'm not saying that there's, uh, I don't think, and I even said that last night, we're not gonna be, uh, I gave the example of businesses in Nantucket where they'll come out and measure the side of your, the size of your, uh, shingle, you know, make sure you have the right window.
Right reveal of yours, yeah.
The number of lights in your window, and, um, we're not going there, I'm just saying that there's, uh, the maintenance, um.
Maintenance is, that's, that's in the ordinances now, so that we can enforce that. It's, we've, we've been a little easy on businesses, um, because some of them were struggling for a while, they're, they're still doing, they're doing better, but we can, we can write, if, if we see issues with businesses, my pet peeve is they're not taking care of the sidewalks in front of them, and letting grass grow in there.
Right.
So that's one of the conversations I'm gonna have with Dino, we're gonna send out a letter to all these folks, you gotta clean up your sidewalks. You know, those little plant boxes, they were put out there, but you guys are responsible to maintain them. Um, if we wanna take that over and have Sid do it, not Sid, listen to me, I'm looking, I'm talking to Rick, and I say Sid, Public Works, that's what Sid does in Atlantic City, that's a special improvement district. When we first got in office, I met with a lot of the business owners and asked if they wanted to do something like that, there's a couple that said yes, but it's a tax. To create that special improvement district, you're, those business owners pay into that. And I wasn't super in favor of it, because it's, it's more money for those businesses to pay. So we, we can certainly work with the current ordinances we have and write violations for property maintenance. We have not harped on that too, too much, because we were trying to work with the VBA and get them to do it internally, that's not working. So we can either go back to them and say, hey, guys, you wanna talk to your members, and even if they're not members, talk to them, or we're gonna start half to writing violations, and that follows up with fines.
Yeah, I don't know how else to do it, I mean, there's, the, the things that I pointed out are, are, are examples of differences in what the code says, so we'll, I'll look through it again to see if there's some.
Yeah, and what you put in there is good stuff, don't, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, but I, I agree, I would draw the line, I, if I were coming to town and I was gonna redo a, a building, if they, if these things were in place, lighting, awnings, you know, maintenance, signage requirements, uh, I would work around that, or work within my existing structure to make them in compliance, but I, I don't know what else we can do other than enforce, um, and is to have the code written well, and then to enforce it.
Agreed.
And then the signage thing does add some things, but we've talked about in the past, uh, blade signage and, um, discouraging.
Roger wrote a blade sign.
You did.
Ordinance, we should add that.
So you, objective having that, those things that added to ordinance that we could do that right way?
Fine with that.
And then, I, I still think the, the committee on, at the planning board wants to, uh, wants to have more broad stroke language in the, in the, um, in the, in the master plan, if there is.
Right, and that gives us the ability to write regs into that, around those master plan recommendations.
And I know you don't wanna add, do anything with colors, but that pink building on Ventnor Avenue looked ridiculous from day one. And, and you get people who do that sometimes.
There, there was a pink house on the bay forever, nobody complained about that. It's, it's.
We can't, we, well, that's different.
That, that business never went into place.
Yeah, that was a, it was never opened.
Well, I guess the, I guess where it becomes debatable is, is, you're right, is that that particular building is that, has been vacant for quite a while.
If that was activated and we wouldn't.
You see that sometimes in neighborhoods where, like, somebody, out of spite, they're fighting, you know, with the neighborhood or something, and they, they paint their house like bright purple or black or neonness, or like, that could happen.
Right, and you, you can't write ordinances around that. I don't think you can, I don't think you should. So I, I don't, I don't, so, you know where I stand on, on telling people what to do with their priorities, so.
That was my, that was my, uh, think discuss, I guess it's more of a discussion item than a comment.
I do wanna add one.
But I did bring it, I'd bring it up.
I neglected to mention that yesterday, um, I participated in interviews for selecting a judge for the Central Court, Atlantic County Court, Municipal Court, and, uh, there were seven candidates, seven good candidates, and, um, I'm trying to see how many, along with Ventnor, there were maybe four or five other, um, cities there participating in the interviews, so, um, now we have to decide who, there's two positions open.
So possibly three, and they.
Possibly.
Possibly three, yeah.